September 19th.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Thank you.
But it'll be by just me, which doesn't matter.
Okay.
I may, depending on what they know, I just may need someone to come along with the kids into my house. I have to go, I have to go this thing at 11 o'clock. My notes. So.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 4th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Can you guys hear me out there?
Yeah, please.
Please take note of the exits around the room in case of mishap and now join me as we re-pledge our fealty to the American flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for River Ridge. This is, the applicants are seeking an extension of site plan approval so they can complete construction for the townhouses. This has been extended numerous times. We extended every time for two years. We had letters from the owners of the site explaining why they needed to have it extended and obviously we see that it's on fire right now. Congratulations to the applicant, the project sponsor, because construction is booming over there and having walked through it recently with some candidates, it was nice to see that it's becoming more and more of a real community over there. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
I make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? The motion carries unanimously. Any comments from the consultants? Didn't think so? Any comments from the board?
No.
Didn't think so? Any comments from the public? If you'd like to come and speak, please. Ms. Cosgrove, just come up and please state your name for the record.
Okay. Should I take my mask off?
You may.
Do you have any kids in the microphone though?
Okay. Karen Cosgrove, 42 Rolling Ridge Road.
Just pull it closer to you, right up to your mouth.
Okay. Karen Cosgrove, 42 Rolling Ridge Road. I just, I would like to congratulate the developer for being able to move forward. I just have one comment. I, I, I think he should take care of what is already there. We have so many dead trees. We have, the driveway was torn up by the plant, oh, about four years ago and it's never been repaired. And I just think if you want to sell, that you should make a nice presentation and, because the place had so much potential in the beginning. And the other thing, I hope that the building inspector holds, holds them to a high value in the building because we've had so many building errors, so many leaks and to great expense to the homeowners.
I'm sorry to hear the latter. I believe, as far as I know, our building inspector does maintain high standards for everybody.
Yes. I, I have faith that, that he will.
Thank you. And the applicant's representative is here tonight, has probably heard. And Pete, could I answer the question?
Yeah, the red repair. So, as part of, as part of when the new developer came in, we got an upgraded road performance bond because most, most of the blacktop that's down there now, which is only a binder course, it's not, it's not the finish course. Most of that is going to have to be taken up and redone, some of the structures lowered. So that whole road is going to be completely new.
Yeah.
Now, so we're working with them to try to figure out whether the town might want to take the roads in phases and not wait until the, the rest of the loop is done. But to answer your question, we had, there is, there is enough money and he realizes the developer and is more than willing to do it because he wants to make it a very nice development and finish it out. So what you're concerned about, we've got like covered. And, you know, the trees will be part of that. If there's any dead trees, they have to be replaced before the town will take it over.
Okay.
So, we realize that and that'll be addressed.
Okay.
But we're very happy with this, with this current like developer. They're very good.
Yes.
You know, they do, they do what they say and they've been working with us, so.
And it's moving along much faster than in past construction.
Very moving along. Yes, 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 yes. We're very, very happy with them.
Okay. Just don't want it to have a black eye.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you, Karen.
Okay, good to see you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application? There being no more. Any comments, Ms. Moss?
No.
They make it a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and I believe this resolution will be introduced by Vice Chair Dexter.
Yes, it is. Resolution to extend site plan approval for River Ridge at Hyde Park, August 4th, 2021, resolution number 57-02T. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a two-year extension of the time to complete construction of the project as shown on the site plan approved by resolution number 57-02K, two and including September 25th, 2023, subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, confirmation that the performance guarantee of $760,000 for the road is in full force and effect through September 25th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Rothschild. Good to see you again. And if you'd like a copy of the resolution, we can email that to you. If it wasn't sent already.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the members of the public who came out to speak. The next item on the agenda is Gleason Family Properties. The applicants are seeking site plan approval to renovate to, as we've been discussing, these historic structures represented tonight by Mr. Andrews of Rhodey Soika &amp; Andrews. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. John, I'll give it over to you.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. Not to repeat the things, but my name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Rhodey Soika &amp; Andrews located in Poughkeepsie, New York. I'm a New York State licensed professional engineer and I'm representing Gleason Family Properties LLC. The applicant, representatives of the applicant are also with me this evening. As you may recall, what we're developing is 517 Salt Point Turnpike. For those old timers like myself, it's the old Rim feed store. It's directly opposite Marshall Drive. There are two existing buildings on the site. Our plan is to refurbish those buildings and essentially use them as they were historically used. The smaller of the two would be an office building, the larger of the two would be a storage building. We're basically rehabbing the site. The site has basically uncontrolled entry today. We're actually moving the entry, establishing a new driveway. We've added parking, we've added parking to the rear. We've got some maneuvering area and access for the storage building. The proposal is to renovate the office, add a bathroom, add water facilities. It'll be a small general office, the use is indeterminate at this point in time. The storage building is going to be general storage. We added two doors to the rear to match the door that's on the front, which is a swing away with a slider inside that will allow access into the interior of the building. And other than that, we plan on rehabilitating the site. There's a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. The last time we spoke with you folks, there were some issues about lighting. What we, and we did hear you, my client heard you. What we've done is we've decided to add a couple residential pole-style lights along the walkway from the parking lot to the building, as well as add some lighting, basically old farm style, if you will, to the new entry doors on the building, one on each side. We've got a sample for you. They're on our plans, but nobody can see the plans when you're sitting up there. So these are what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Black in color. I actually have more, so.
So this is a building mounted.
So you would have two building mounted, one on each side on the latch side of the doors, about a five foot six mounting height. And then you'd have two residential-style posts. They're mounted on direct berry poles. They're about six foot above grade when they're all done. So they'll kind of give you, and they, they come in LED. I will be candid with you, I tried to get a footprint from the manufacturer, they don't generate one. So I don't have one to give you. The other thing that, that you were concerned about is, my client had kind of proposed a plain vanilla project and you were interested in a little more landscaping. They kind of went back to the drawing board. If you remember last time, we had a small fence along the front. What we've done now is added three red maples, two in the lawn that's kind of to the east or, or kind of the one side of the small building.
Mm-hmm.
And then another one on the other side near the handicap parking space. And then we, what we've tried to do is dress up the roadside of that building. If you, if you realize, if you're no looking at it, it kind of sits above the ground. So what we proposed is kind of like a boxwood hedge, about three and a half to, three to three and a half feet along the front, a couple viburnum and some holly to give it some. The viburnum are a white, it makes a nice contrast with the building. The boxwood will kind of pick up the red as well and then a couple hollies. And then we added some viburnum down on the storage building. If you remember, there was some concerns, they have that front loading dock that's elevated. So we added a couple there at the end of the parking lot. So we tried to basically dress up the roadside. And other than that, it'll be kind of, you know, the remainder will be grass. There was others, there was some other concerns about access to the, up to the septic system with a forced main. Realizing it's a forced main, what I had shown you on the drawings was, yes, the five-foot wide disturbance associated with the trench. The reality is, if I'm going to get a machine up there, it's going to end up being 10-foot wide. So we kind of changed that on the drawings and, and labeled that. But since it is a forced main, we also have some latitude. I don't have to draw a straight line and remove every tree and intervening. So we put some notes on there that will adjust the forced main as necessary to try to save as many trees as we can. The other concern everybody had expressed, there aren't a lot of big trees on the site. If you've been there, most of them are either small saplings that are, quite honestly, garbage.
Successive growth.
Yeah. Or they're in the four to, to six inch range. So rather than try to preserve the three or four eight-inch trees that were there, we lowered that to four inch. And my client has, basically thinks he can accomplish what he wishes, leaving most of those trees. So our goal is, if we don't have to, we're not taking it out. And, and we try to convey that on the drawings. Our intent is still to cede that understory and clean up the understory to give it a little more of a farm look, but we're going to, we're going to try to save as many trees as we can. And then the last thing is, the board offered us the opportunity and we decided that it would make sense to land bank two parking spaces. And what we did, and I'm not sure if it was your intent, we picked one on either end.
Nope, that's what we were thinking. That's our intent.
So we pressed the parking to hide behind the building.
Yep.
And I thought that made great sense and that's what we did. And that's now shown and incorporated on the drawings. The other thing is, your planner had noted last time, we had put a note on there that said if we, if we couldn't redo one of the buildings, we had to come back and make sure it complied with zoning. She asked, it said, if you realize if you got to, if you can't reuse those buildings, you've got to come back and get a newer amended approval. So we added that note to the first page as well. In the intervening time, we also got comments from Dutchess County. I just want to address them because I have some difficulties with, with some of them and I just wanted to make sure I get it in the record. Her first one was regarding the driveway. She was looking to have it located across from West Marshall. Believe it or not, we tried that. We couldn't preserve the storage barn to do that. And also, we couldn't get an available line of sight. The only way to get a line of sight is if you, if you know the site, right past ours, there's a little hill.
Mm-hmm.
So what we had to do is move the driveway up to the top of the hill. And even doing that, in order to get the line of sight, as you know, we have to peel off our neighbor's property. So, good, good thought. We had it originally, but it didn't work with our plan. So we opted with what you have shown. Landscaping, we took our cues from you. If you need more, obviously, we can adjust it, but I think we, we did what you asked. Lighting, same thing. I think we made, I think we made a good choice. We had a hard time picking an old-fashioned barn light, but I think we did. Parking, she had suggested, the county planner had suggested that we reorientate the parking facing the road. We intentionally did not do that for a couple reasons. Number one, the light trespass now hits a hill that goes up. They're not bothering anybody. But I think what's more important is the site is kind of tight, you know, the cleared portion, and that office building is small. If you rotated and flipped the parking to the other side so that it was up against the office, it kind of destroys the little ambiance that, that does exist around that office. So we thought by pushing it to the other side and facing away, it gave us an opportunity to, to create a little better space around the office and make it look like it, you know, was more traditionally a farmhouse-type situation. So, again, it was a nice idea. We considered it, but we, we think that we chose the better of the two. I understand her concerns about pedestrian car conflict, but this isn't the Walmart parking lot and I, I don't think that that's going to be an issue. So quite honestly, we felt that the advantages of keeping that light away from pointing at the highway and, and a few other things actually made better sense. And then, other than that, I think we, we've addressed everything and we look forward to move. Oh, last. You had asked colors. My client diligently picked swatches of paint from the existing building. You're free to look at them if you wish. But I, I don't know whether you want, but her intent is, is to go with a barn red. There are several types and, believe it or not, it's not paint. These buildings are more traditionally stained.
Stained.
So she has picked two stains. One is a semi-solid, one is a, is a more solid. To be blunt, it's going to depend on how the buildings take the stain and which stain the buildings take.
What wood you use.
Because our intent is to kind of use as much of the existing woods that's there. And by the time you clean it and prep it, stain always behaves a little oddly. So I don't know whether you need this or not, or whether you want the samples, but you can see, we, we tried to do the best.
Try and match.
And it's.
I think that's sufficient.
Yeah. It's flat, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no glosses. No, it's a, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I got it.
No, I can do it for you. And other than that, I'm here to take questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Andrews, that was very thorough and because I'd sent you an email, I knew that you'd, I personally already knew that you had, with your applicant, your clients, the applicants had made these changes and I'll just say, I think they're fantastic. I think the light looks great, but we'll hear from the rest of the board. Let me move quickly first over to consultants. Ms. Franzen?
I think it sounds like, it sounds that the application and the site plan is going in the direction that the planning board was looking for aesthetically and otherwise. And we look forward to seeing the revised plans and moving it forward. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Zataro?
No, not at this time.
Ms. Moss, any comments? Nope. Ms. Pollardaro?
No comments.
Let me start from my left. Mr. Pickett, comments?
I'll leave peace with what I've seen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Moss, sir?
Thank you for responding to all of our comments and the DC planning comments. I wanted to clarify something. How many of the building lights did you say? Because there's a front and a back. So where are you putting them?
We're putting one light on what will be the new front entry.
Yeah.
Next to the door. Just one. And then we're putting one on the, the backside, just one next to the door. It's kind of shown as a double door, but I think my client has, is going to leave one door and just have one side open.
Okay.
One will be a fixed panel. So there's going to be two building-mounted lights. They'll be on the porch and directed down as you, as you can see. They're not.
Yeah.
And then two lights. One set about five foot off the edge of pavement, the other one is about 20 foot down, which puts it about 15 foot off the porch. So that kind of gives you a uniformity of light as you walk from the porch out to the parking lot or the reverse.
Very good. Thank you. And personally, I'd rather not see the parking from the road.
I agree. I do understand what Ms. Leforme was saying in terms of pedestrian vehicle conflicts.
Yeah.
But this is, we're going to land bank two spaces. There's not going to be very many cars there. So, and most people are used to walking and paying attention when there's a parking lot to see if there's any coming. So, Ms. Dexter, comments?
Nothing really to add. I agree with my colleagues' comments and I'm very excited about this project. That's just such a great way, really speaks to the kind of project that will fit well on that road.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you very much for listening to our comments and I'm excited to see a progress and successful business there. Thank you.
Ms. Napoli?
Unless you get very tired of hearing this, I also like to add my thanks for listening to the board and incorporating the suggestions. I hope that you're happy with them also and it will make a, hopefully, a better project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So let me bring up the rear then and be a little bit even more enthusiastic. We haven't seen the plans yet that you've described, but what you discussed all sounds fantastic to me. Adding the landscaping additions are thoughtful. The combination of red maples and the red color you're using has a kind of, as I sometimes say up here, visual echo. The viburnums, the hollies, everything is going to make this look fantastic. And these were both responses to our comments and also some that were echoed by Ms. Leforme at DC Planning. But I feel like we're pretty much where we need to be. We don't have anything new from DOT yet, right, John?
We do not. And I've tried to get answers, but they're not forthcoming.
Okay. Maybe I can make a phone call or two over there and see what's happening because we'd like to see this move forward. I mean, that can be a condition, but I don't want them to make major changes in this and you have to come back and.
That's my greatest fear too, sir. I, but I don't think they will. There isn't much.
Well, you've already looked very carefully at the entrance and the exit where it's ideally located in terms of your sight lines. And that's already, I believe, recognized that you're going to have to have some trimming of the landscape, or the shrubs, the flora and fauna at the Baxter property next door, but you've already gotten permission for that. So we know where we're going to wind up. I guess there might be something still left with stormwater or something maybe from them?
There's, there's, to be honest with you, if you look at our plan, we can reasonably accommodate some stormwater management on there.
Yes.
I, I was not naive enough to believe that DOT was going to let me float through without something. So, but, you know, we, we've got some grading in some other areas in the front intentionally where if we had to put a, a stormwater feature, either a, a, a small bio-retention area or something of that nature, it would actually work with the landscaping. It would be an enhancement. It would break things up and we can reasonably accommodate it.
The reason I mentioned stormwater is when, and the individual at DOT who asked this question, I believe, just retired. But when we were looking at the other, I'll call it Gleason property, the construction site, there was a question about stormwater, even though it wasn't going anywhere near the highway, that we had to explain. So, do you remember that?
Yeah.
It was kind of a late way in. And the stormwater was already staying up on top of the site, so I didn't quite understand it. But they, I was told later on, have real concerns about water coming down on this portion of the road because of the design speed of the, of the site. People whizzed through there. So at any rate, I'll hope that we, let me make some phone calls to see if I can help.
Well, I could try too. John, who are you working with? Joe Taylor?
Yeah.
Hi.
Joseph Reel.
Yeah, I understand. Joseph, yes, that's correct. Thank you.
He's below speed.
Thank you for, thank you for correcting me on that. So I'll try him too. I'm working with him on a bunch of things and, because they have a, I mean, I haven't done it in a while, but they have a new highway work permit process and you got to go through.
Got to go through the process, which we did and.
You filled out, you filled out the perm 33 form and got that.
You filled out the perm 33, went through the stage.
That's crazy, yeah.
Stage one, which you're not allowed to fill out the rest of the stages.
Yeah, right.
So we've done everything they've asked for. We've made two submittals. I think they even annoyed your planning board secretary because they, after getting a submittal from her, they called me for additional information. So DOT is winning a lot of friends here, so.
All right.
And I don't think they're, I don't, I don't, I think it's just one of the remnants of the COVID experience from what I'm led to believe. People are still not fully staffed and back at their job.
Yeah.
They had one person retire. That was part of it.
Right.
Yes.
She's the one who retired.
Well, I'll try too.
And I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll make contact.
The more people, the merrier.
Well, I believe they finally told them about the perm 33 after my email through, came through. So let's see if we can bring some weight of the planning board and our consultants onto this. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Nope? Okay. Then what we plan to do is adjourn this to September 1st to give you time to keep dealing with DOT. Does that seem reasonable to you, John? That'll give you time to submit the new plans to us?
We're prepared to submit the new plans. They're, they're being modified.
I mean, I think once we're, the ones our consultants and the board has a chance to review the new set, it looks like to me we'll be in the position to close the public hearing instead of taking action. Because you've answered everything from what I, verbally, what I heard is that you answered all our concerns. So as soon as we see the plans and make sure that, then that's, board, does that sound right?
I don't think my client would have a problem deferring it as long as maybe we could entertain having a resolution available at that.
Would you, would you like us to adjourn this to, when are you going to submit the plans? If you submit them, say tomorrow, then we could do this to August the 19th or 18th.
I could probably get them here tomorrow. They're all done.
Is that okay with you, Cynthia? Victoria?
We have three appointments on the 18th. We have three appointments on the 18th. It's maybe four.
So this would be the first continued public hearing?
We don't have any other public hearings.
Okay, so we don't have any other public hearings. Would you want this to go to August the, this is the 4th, 18th?
18th. Yes, you're right. 18th.
Or 18th, you're right.
That would be lovely, Sean.
It would be with the understanding that if we don't hear back from DOT and approval is conditioned on DOT approval, that you may have to come back to the board to amend the plans down the road if, if there's.
Understood. That, that goes with the territory, ma'am. I, I get it.
Okay.
So what, what I'll do is I'll put together the plans. I'm not sure my cover letter will be as neat or concise as I can, but I'll do that first thing in the morning and we'll try to get it to you.
You have to remember, you're in the pipeline already and the board's pretty familiar with this project by this point.
is I'll put together the plans. I'm not sure my cover letter will be as neat and concise as I can, but I'll do that first thing in the morning. And we'll try to get it to you.
You have to remember, you're in the pipeline already and the board's pretty familiar with this project by this point. We're going to be looking really at just the deltas.
I understand.
And you pretty much highlighted those beautifully tonight. So I think that the board can go through it pretty quickly. The consultants will be going through it a little bit more finely.
I mean, I don't really have much, I don't really have anything really, to be honest with you, because it's, you know, the DOT is going to review, you know, the drainage and...
And I can try making a phone call tomorrow to DOT to get it started.
Have you submitted to the health department, John?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Because we don't have anything from the town yet. So...
Oh, we got to do secret.
We already, we, we presented it type two.
Type two, but you, I, I hasn't reached prelim, you don't, you don't have preliminary, but...
But we don't have preliminary site plan?
Right.
Do they want preliminary site plan? I thought that's on a subdivision.
Well, they, on subdivision, but they want some indication from the town that you're moving ahead. So we have not submitted.
I mean, we could have given them that, but that's, but that's all right.
Should I contact Jason tomorrow?
No, we can, I, that, he, they're easy. They're, they're, I have no issues with them.
Well, let's not go too far. Let's not go too far.
I have no issues with them.
Let me put it this way. I think you've heard from the board tonight that, again, depending, looking at the actual plans, but from your description, you didn't hear anything negative up here.
Nope. Well, everything you've asked for is there. The only thing I don't have is DOT and health department. Health department, we can put together relatively quickly and DOT, the quicker we get them to move, we're ready to respond to them as well.
I just want to point out that we had an application expire. Couldn't get it, they couldn't get their conditions met. And it was primarily DCDPW as well as Department of Health. And we're going to be react, they've resubmitted, we'll be reactivating this project tonight because it's the same thing as what we approved. But I was told Department of Health is moving slowly. So, but maybe you have some juice over there that some other people don't. So, good. But that would be a condition no matter what.
Forty years of...
Well, the other case was a little bit...
I know. There were, there were different circumstances there.
A little bit different. We had minor problems.
At any rate, then make it a motion to adjourn this public hearing to August 18th.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're getting there, guys. Shortly, shortly. John, a pleasure to work with you. You really worked thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been nice working with the board.
Well, it, we can all sort of tell that you've been working, you've worked on both sides as well, that's why.
Still do.
Thank you. Thank you.
He's a real pro.
Yep. The next item on the agenda is a continued public, wait.
Yes, yes.
Continued public hearing for 64 Falkhill Road. This is a two lot subdivision and also a site plan because there'll be two single family houses on the new lot when it's created. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So the applicants were not, I told them they didn't need to be here tonight, but just to update everyone, we had, I had an email today that contained a letter from Mr. Scott, the applicant's engineer. If we recall, we couldn't take action on this because the owner of the current larger parcel, Mr. Bellini, had several building permit violations. And under our code, the board can take action if it helps cure a violation, but if it has nothing to do with it, we can't take action until the violations are cured or resolved. Mr. Scott believes that the new owner, potential new owner, Ms. Coquinos, hired an engineer to help Mr. Bellini solve those problems. As of today, they had, they set up a meeting with Mr. Westermeyer for Friday. They believe they've solved every, they have everything that Mr. Westermeyer needs. In the letter, Mr. Scott asked us to close the public hearing, so close it on both subdivision and site plan. I was able to respond in time to say, we could consider closing for subdivision and take action in two weeks because they need that before we can actually do the site plan. But they still have not given us renderings yet. That's required under our code as something to see. When Vice Chair Dexter and I took the site walk, they, Mr. Scott showed us basically renderings. And I said, well, that looks like what you should submit because this is not a commercial site. We're not going to be looking to nail you down to know exactly what it's going to look like. It has to just look like it fits in with the environment, et cetera. And Mr. Coquinos then was, did a conference call in with us, who said that he and his partner, basically, they're not going to make exterior changes. They're just noodling around with the interior. So I said, if you can submit those digitally, then I'll show them to Tad, Victoria, and the board. And if we're all okay, then that could be submitted. Because that's what, that's what we're sort of waiting for. But I said, we have to keep the public hearing open so that the public could have a chance to comment on the elevations as well. I believe I did that correctly. So if the board wants to, we could close the public hearing on the subdivision. Now importantly, I did make certain that the new owner and that Mr. Scott were aware that if they believe that the violations can be cured this week, if they're not, and if it takes longer than 60 days, once we close the public hearing, we have 60 days to take action. If they haven't cured them, we would not be able to approve the subdivision. They would have to start all over again. They agreed to take the risk. So I'm just pointing that out.
Well, they can also...
Well, they're trying to move and they, we got a letter today also from Mr. Teed at Department of Health or the Behavior and Community Health, that there's some issues still lingering there with the septics for both of the single family homes. But otherwise, it looks like that those were not all major. It was about impermeable clay barriers and some callouts that were technical. So I think that, that they're interested in moving forward the subdivision so they can actually purchase the parcel as well. Because they, of course, they'll be able to hear that the board is generally speaking, considering, I won't say approving, but considering doing what we're supposed to do, which is mitigate any of the negative impacts on there and otherwise, since it's an allowed right, permitted to move forward.
Will subdivision approval be conditioned on them roughing in the road? Or is that done already?
So Peter, the road is roughed in, because we've all driven it, but it's not roughed in as in like ready to take, it's not a binder course or something?
No. I think the way we left it is that it would be done as part of the first building, building permit. And then it would be rough graded. Well, it's already rough graded, but there's parts of it that have to be cut back.
Right.
To meet the 15% grade. And then we were going to take a, we're going to take a bond for the, you know, the paving because they don't want to, they don't want to have to, you know, to pave it until, until the rest of the construction is done and don't bring heavy, you know, equipment.
Who blame them? We just heard at River Ridge, that's why the problem there is that the road was not, I mean, it's not fully done.
Yeah.
But the construction vehicles are causing the damage that Ms. Cosgrove was talking about.
Yeah. So...
So, I mean, the only risk of that is that if, if Mr. Coquinos decides not to build and then the lot is sold again, that there's not an access for it graded in.
True. And the site plan would never, would have been voided because he wouldn't have, it would have been sold and moved on. So someone could build a single family house. And you're saying that then there would not be a requirement that the driveway would be built?
Right. It's just a future issue, having no driveway, but...
Can they pull a building permit without a constructed, or some sort of better driveway than just a roughed out one? Tad's saying yes. So...
I think it's a CO.
Okay. Okay. So at some point, it would be addressed.
That's a problem.
At some point, it would be addressed.
I mean, the issue that always happens is that, I mean, I think what Pete tries to get at by requiring it to be graded in now is that we avoid neighbor fights down the road.
Neighbor disputes are never pleasant.
But we can talk about the conditions.
Okay. So any comments from the consultants on that, on this? We did get a full plan set, so we'll all be reviewing that final full plan set before our next agenda meeting on Wednesday to see about moving forward. I mean, Peter thinks he solved everything except for the elevation. So, and I should be getting those digitally tonight and I will forward them on to the board, et cetera, to see if you guys think so. But I mean, because this is a residence, we did bring up visual impacts, but they presented to show that it really be visible from certain spots and not really from a lot of public ones. If it is, it's going to look really tiny. So I think that as long as they don't, that they show, I said, you must show colors, labeled paints, materials. If they're going to paint it chartreuse, say that might be a bit of a difference in terms of visibility. But otherwise, I don't think they would. I think that we're pretty close on this one too. So any other, any comments from Tad? Any comments from the board or questions?
I'm on it.
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, wait.
Oh, no, no. I'm sorry. First, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Okay. I don't recognize you guys, so I'm just waiting to hear you say you want to speak about something. I'll keep asking over and over again. There being no other public comment, then make it a motion to close the portion of the public hearing that deals with the subdivision only.
Yes. To, I move to close the public hearing for subdivision only and to adjourn the public hearing for site plan for 64 Falkhill Road, Highbury, to August 18th, 2021.
And adjourning for site plan until what date?
August 18th. Wait a minute. Closing the public hearing for subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. And we're adjourning the public hearing for site plan to August 18th.
Mm-hmm.
So that the words were decoupling them then?
I didn't hear it.
Okay.
Oh, I, I missed.
Tomorrow.
That's okay. And I took my mask off to say it.
I'm sorry.
I'm, no, no, don't.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. That was great. One, one little small step further down the road.
Yes.
Okay, workshop. This is Dollar General. This is the application that I believe you heard.
Yeah. Just, just for future reference, because we're unsure with the COVID crisis, we do want to note that people should be checking in with the planning office to confirm the location of the hearing in case there's authorization to go to a virtual...
Let me restate that without a mask. So what our attorney now was stating is that we are, because of the current spike in the Delta variant and Delta plus variant, even newer variant on Delta, I understand that there's more cases reported in Rockland County now. So, and we're pretty close to Rockland County. So we're not certain whether we'll be meeting in person in two weeks. So please check the town website to make certain if you want to hear a public, or attend a public hearing. It'll be allowed through Zoom meetings again. I'll note that so far, there doesn't seem to be any movement by the governor to reinstitute executive orders. He probably has other things on his mind. This would require, I believe, the governor to reinstate the executive orders that allow public officers to meet remotely. I don't believe that the town can overrule that, or can we?
The, right. It's unlikely the governor would do that as his emergency powers are gone. But the legislature is considering a bill, which could be passed.
Oh, okay.
You mean the assembly?
Mm-hmm.
And state senate is what you're talking about?
When they come back and, right.
I was going to say.
When they're back in session.
There, and Senator Peter, Peter Harkam is one of the ones who's actually sponsoring the bill that would allow municipalities to continue to have Zoom meetings for public official, public officers. But it kind of died at the last session, so it will be revisited. So we'll see. And of course, that applies to our planning board members as well. Now, next item on the agenda. I mentioned an application, the site plan approval expired. Normally, we allow six months in which to complete conditions. We also are able to grant two 90-day extensions. Those were granted in addition. We also granted tolling of 244 days, but the applicants were unable to move forward with all conditions. They had, this was a long meeting with the applicant's representatives. Obviously, the applicant was not happy to, that it expired, but understands that there's really nothing we can do legally. This is not a discretionary issue. So they've resubmitted. We confirmed over the week that because it's the exact, or the, mostly the exact same, I will say that the, the minor changes that they made from the last approved plan to what they submitted are just for the ones where they've met conditions. That's all. So I asked Ms. Majulowski, and now we have Mr. Albanese, in case no one knew, Jeff Albanese, who was here 10 years ago or 11, representing Quick Check, has retired or left Quick Check, and he's now with Hicks Netiker. He told me outside that he was tired of doing convenience stores and gas stations. These are down already 70 for Dollar General. So at any rate, he was here, but said he doesn't need to stay here either. So in essence, the two conditions that it took them the longest to meet, one was Dutchess County Department of Public Works. There were various sightline issues that were discovered once they dug down into more details. That took about six months to resolve. In the interim, they also had assumed that there is an approval from Department of Health. We confirmed with Mr. Teed, who reviews Department of Health for Hyde Park, that it was not an approval. And the reason why it was not an approval was because they had sort of a preliminary tentative approval, conceptual approval, but the well that they need to drill is below the existing building. And they just closed a couple of months ago, so they couldn't pull a demo permit. So they couldn't drill the well. Until they drilled the well and do the tests, Department of Health can't approve it because there's actually no system designed. And as Mr. Zataro has explained to the layman me, part of the problem is, is they may need to do some cha, their system, the water system may need purification.
Backwash.
To backwash it, just like used to backwash pools.
Doing good so far. Keep going.
Going out. And if they are going to have to backwash, then their, their stormwater system also needs some changes and redesign because it would change, yes, the septic and the stormwater. So this is why that, once we got through talking to the applicant's representatives, they realized that if further changes are made, they may need this extra extension anyway that we're able to give them by restarting the process. So in essence, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Comments? Okay. We have a resolution that will reaffirm our secret negative declaration because they haven't changed the application much, except, as I said, to meet conditions. And we'll set a public hearing. I believe this will be introduced by Stephanie.
Yes, thank you. Resolution to reaffirm secret negative, negative declaration. Dollar General 1 East Dorsey Lane, August 4th, 2021, resolution number 2019-04G. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior secret determination of significance, a negative declaration issued on October 2nd, 2019.
Second?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I went over the plans today with Liz, the ones that she, you know, had sent up. There's just two very, very minor items on there that I would like Karen to, you know, update on the plan. So I'm going to send her an email, a copy of the planning office, so we have it in the file.
Okay.
Minor stuff, very, very minor.
Yeah. If, if we all recall, I asked Ms. Axelson, who'd been reviewing this up all the way through the approval, to do a side-by-side comparison. And she, if you saw, she did little bubbles to say what had changed. They seem to be, these were two that...
Yeah.
They seem to be minor.
Yes. This is one, again, it's just minor, but I'd, I'd just like her to change a couple little mi, minor things.
No problem.
I'll send it up.
Okay. Thank you. And do we set the public hearing?
Not yet.
Oops. Make it a motion to set the public hearing for October 6th.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. And again, Ms. Lefarmy affirmed that we do not have to send it over to Dutchess County Planning. And we don't have to refer this out because it's the same plan that they had seen before that they'll still be reviewing. The next item on the agenda is Hudson Valley Chimney. The applicant's requesting a sign permit for a freestanding sign. Interestingly, it was all code compliant. Ms. Moss, you must have been happy when you saw this one.
[laughing]
You know that.
Not very many, actually, as it turns out. I believe this resolution will be introduced by Ms. Annapoli.
Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to town code section 108 dash 24.3A 4D. Hudson Valley Chimney replacement freestanding sign 3647 Albany Post Road, date August 4th, 2021, and resolution is 2021-37. For whereas is, be it resolved that the board finds the uplighting is fully shielded and will not cause glare and will create a uniform illumination of a free standing sign. And be it further resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for Hudson Valley Chimney based on the sign permit application submitted by Nancy Forrest for the property owner, Hudson Valley Proprieties, property, sorry, LLC.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is for John Palmer. This is request for a site plan waiver for a rear deck. This is located at 14 New Ball Drive. It is near the farm lane in the Valkill property, but it has been in existence for quite some time. We drew a recommendation from the zoning administrator because the impacts it might have have already been kind of absorbed in because it's been there for a really long time. And it showed, we saw the pictures. Any questions from anyone? I believe Brent's going to introduce this one.
Yes. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, John Palmer, 14 New Ball Drive, site plan waiver, town code section 108 dash 9.4C2, August 4th, 2021, resolution 2021-30. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by John Palmer for his existing rear deck to his single family home and whereas, 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 whereas. Therefore be it resolved that Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the rear deck as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the planning department on July 21st, 2021.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. And that concludes the public portion of this meeting tonight. I need to make, ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I believe tonight, we're going to invite Ms. Moss. Make it a motion to go out of executive, executive session and return to regular meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A reminder, there were no actions taken during executive session, really a discussion. That noted, make it a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tony, for your patience standing down there while we were in executive session. Thank you, audience. And thank you Supervisor Rourke, Councilman Kepner for providing these resources to televise us.
Thank you.
Thank you.